We're going to open the October 28th meeting of the Selectmen. The first thing on our agenda is a 7 o'clock continuation of a public hearing. This is a hearing of the Berlin Board of Selectmen as the local licensing authority, continued from October 21st, relative to alleged violations of the All Alcohol Section 12 license held by Gregory Smith for the Flat Penny Bar and Grill at 263 West Street in Berlin. This hearing's being recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Cable Television Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice and image may be recorded. Notice of this violation hearing was sent by certified mail, return receipt to Gregory Smith on October 10th. The notice of violation hearing was read into the record on October 21st. The Board heard testimony from witnesses during the evidentiary portion of the hearing on October 21st. Gregory Smith, the holder of Section 12 license for the licensed premises, was absent. I'm the presiding officer for this hearing and may call specific witnesses to provide responses to any further questions from the Board. Be reminded that witnesses previously sworn are still under oath. So, would you care to update us?
So again, I'm James Mears. My law office is at 80 Foster Street in Peabody, and I represent the New Flat Penny LLC. Where we left you last, we were looking for our closing on our property at 263 West Street on Tuesday. That closing did take place. There was a delay in the closing documents, the deed specifically going on record until Thursday of last week, and that was due to a faulty discharge that was delivered to the closing attorney's office on Tuesday. That was from the first mortgagee, who also happened to be Mr. Smith's brother, Brian Smith. Mr. Greg Smith did pick up that discharge from Brian Smith's attorney in Boston, brought it to the closing in Warwick, Rhode Island. Unfortunately, it was a copy and therefore was not going to be accepted for recording. So what transpired thereafter was I prepared and submitted to Mr. Brian Smith another discharge, which he had signed and notarized in Virginia, and that was FedExed up to the closing attorney's office on Wednesday. He received it Thursday. The deed to the New Flat Penny LLC went on record on Thursday, and shortly thereafter, the discharge of mortgage went on as well. So we completed our closing on Thursday. I met with Mr. Smith on Friday to discuss what had happened here on the 21st. He indicated that he was about but was again preferring not to appear at the hearing itself. I did tell him that I thought it would at least be helpful since we were going to file our application for the transfer of the license on Monday. Copies of that I had sent to the town administrator and your secretary, Ms. Arada, on Thursday. What I was missing at the time were two documents. One was a certificate of compliance from the Department of Unemployment Assistance. And so what transpired on Friday was when I met with Mr. Smith, we went online and he was able to request the certificate and receive it online. We printed it out and then sent it on to the town administrator, I believe, the copy that was received today, together with our asset purchase and sales agreement, which was necessary also for our application. So I believe we have a complete application that the town has received, and in addition to that, I provided a letter from Mr. Smith in which he's indicated that he continues on as manager, which he does. However, he's designated Ms. Joan Connor, who is with me this evening and was here last week, as the assistant manager. So we're hopeful that while our application is pending, we have done what is necessary to be able to continue on with the operation of the business. Again, we expect Mr. Smith to be responsive to us if needed. However, we're not counting on him to actually be there running the day-to-day operation of the business itself.
So I guess I would ask, Mr. Smith has not been at the 21st, the hearing on the 21st. He's not here this evening.
Right.
You passed papers on Tuesday.
Tuesday, correct.
Correct. And he appointed, he said he would be a manager after Tuesday, which then means you all were the owners of the property.
We're the owners of the property, but of course-
But he has the license.
He has the license, so we have to maintain that connection with him, which he has been cooperative with. Again, he provided the remaining document that we needed for our application, the DUA And beyond that, if there are questions or issues that we have, none of which have surfaced so far, he's available for us to speak with him. But we're just not counting on him to come in and play an active role as manager. We don't feel that's responsible on our part, and therefore we've asked for that designation, which he provided. I will tell you, he was a bit concerned about providing it due to potential liability that would continue to be at his doorstep. But what we have done for our part is we've made sure that we have all the proper insurance in place for the operation. We're not entirely clear that that has always been there under Mr. Smith's tutelage, but it is there and has been there for us. So we've, I think, satisfied him that there's more coverage there now than I think has been there in the past, so.
So it was admitted on 10/21 that he's not been on site for a lengthy period of time?
That is true. He's appeared from time to time. There was some work that he was doing on the site, which was part of the underlying agreement, but essentially that is concluded. We're, we have nothing currently, and we don't foresee anything, that we're going to be requesting that he do. So that's essentially where it stands.
So I would say at this point, there's been no approval by the Board or the ABCC on the change of manager or owner. And Greg Smith's obviously missing in action. Who has been purchasing the alcohol up till now?
So we have made purchases of alcohol through the management agreement. That has been essentially through, you know, Mr. Smith. I mean, the orders are essentially done through him, but is he there to actually receive the alcohol when it comes in? He isn't. You know, the license is posted as it is supposed to be posted. But I guess I would say that, I mean, our hope is that our application will move swiftly and that we've taken every precaution that we can to make sure that things are done properly. We can't speak too much for Mr. Smith. This is unfortunately not been the way we saw this process going forward when we entered into this transaction with him.
Right.
So we're trying to make the best of what we have to work with or not with him, so.
So I guess my concern would be that you all would be ordering alcohol, serving alcohol, and you don't have a license to do so.
We don't, well, you're correct. I mean, we have his license.
It's in his name.
It's in his name. He's responsible. I mean, it's being done at some risk to him, I gather, which is why we've asked him to designate someone to stand in, in his position as the assistant manager. And essentially, the assurances we provided to him is that we're fully insured, the people, the manager, the designee is properly certified and is on site, so.
It's sort of a liability to the town also, I would think.
Well, in what way?
Should someone complain? This all could come out in another way, that we haven't given you permission to transfer the license.
So we don't have permission to transfer the license. That's correct. Again, in terms of what happens in the interim, I understand certainly as you look at Mr. Smith, you may find yourself saying, well, you know, you're acting pursuant to delegation of authority from him, and we're not really too happy with him right at the moment. I, so I certainly understand that. I think we've taken all the appropriate steps that we would have taken in the normal course of going through a transition if it were not simply Mr. Smith. If it had been someone who was not in, essentially, maybe poor standing with the Board, there wouldn't be the concern that you have. I mean, it's essentially, when these do proceed in this fashion without having to essentially shut down that entire operation and then start it up, maybe what could be a month or more later. And I think, again, it's been, the unfortunate part of it is been that, again, Mr. Smith hasn't done what the Board would be expecting him to do. I think we're asking that you not, in throwing that fastball at his head, have it curve and hit us in the head. We tried to do the right thing here. We think we're a positive influence for the operation now and for the town itself, and we believe we've taken the necessary steps, certainly from a liability standpoint, to protect both Mr. Smith and the town, despite what he may or may not have done in the past. So I think that's what we're asking the Board to consider, is that hopefully our license will move through quickly. We have our manager-to-be is a local resident here, works in the town, is from, essentially, this is her home. And Mr. Smith came here from other parts and maybe was not as concerned about his impact here on the town, but we are. And we're very much open to whatever suggestions or direction the Board has, but we've essentially done, I think, all we can do with Mr. Smith at this point.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. Does either of the other Board members have any questions?
I haven't seen anything specifically indicating our liability in this issue. You mentioned that you're concerned about that. I haven't seen anything specifically about that. Is that something that we have consulted legal about or that we should consult legal about before we make a decision on this?
Margaret?
I really, I really can't advise. I just know that the local licensing authority should take some sort of an action to prevent a non-licensed establishment, a non-properly licensed establishment, from continuing to operate. So there should be measured steps taken. Attorney Mears mentioned that applications for the license transfer were handed in today. We got the complete packets today.
I'm not sure if it's complete.
We're not sure if it's complete, but we did get packets today, so we should be proceeding, the Board should be proceeding with setting a hearing date. The one question I do have is that, and I think this has already been touched on, that the establishment isn't operating as a properly licensed establishment. I think that in itself has been established.
And it hasn't been for a while now.
It hasn't been for a while. I do have a question that I'd like to ask through the chair.
Sure.
This management agreement that was executed based on the purchase and sale on July 23rd, was Mr. Smith or your clients, was either party informed that that management agreement really had no bearing on the license because it hadn't been introduced and reviewed by the local licensing authority or the ABCC? So it's really not a management agreement that exists in the eyes of the town?
Right. We, again, we had expected that Mr. Smith was, once that document was signed, was going to pursue that issue with the town. We understand that there is this, certainly the obligation to have it presented and accepted. We received that direction essentially from him. Our failing was that we did not follow up to make certain that that was done. We had expected he would do it. It was, again, similar to when the letter came from, I believe Ms. Stone offered it to Mr. Smith, indicating that there were issues that needed a response from Mr. Smith. He told me when I spoke to him about it, the Monday before he was going to call, that he would call and discuss it. I found out from him on Friday that he, after telling me that he had called and discussed it, had left a voicemail. Again, I think we put a little too much faith in Mr. Smith. We didn't realize that, as Ms. Stone brought up at the last meeting, that there had apparently been a number of incidences. We thought everything was fine, essentially with the town, when we came on board in late July. And unfortunately, representation after representation turned out to be not the case. And so we found ourselves now stuck in a bad spot, essentially. And again, it's not of interest to the Board. There were a number of things that were told to us about the property itself, the operation, and so on, and most of that turned out to be incorrect. So we've just been trying to get this straightened out as quickly and as efficiently and as correctly as possible.
And just a point of clarification. Margaret and I delivered that letter to your manager, Bill.
Bill, yes.
So it was-
They brought in the paperwork today.
Yeah, it was Margaret and I, so just not me.
Right, no, but there was a letter you had authored previously, I believe, to Mr. Smith.
Yes, yes, to the town, correct.
And that's, again, what I understood he was going to address correctly, directly, and told me he had, and then on Friday I learned it was, well, he left a voicemail, which is somewhat short of having a conversation about the substance of the letter, so.
So I would say that that agreement is moot, as far as we're concerned?
Yes, because it was never reviewed and approved by the local licensing authority or ABCC.
Right.
Through the chair, to the point of liability, this is the local licensing authority, and the local licensing authority has the ability and has the responsibility to assure that all of its establishments are properly licensed. I would think that exposure would only come if the Board turned a blind eye to issues.
Right.
As far as the management switch over, no. They're saying that Greg Smith, who's missing in action, is still the manager of record. If they were to go through the effort to get him to file that with us, to change the manager at this point, is that moot also because of the change of ownership?
Mm-hmm. I believe so.
I haven't had a chance to see this designation that you've referred to that came in today. So what exactly, can I ask, what exactly does that do?
So with Mr. Smith being the manager of record, it was our understanding that simply put, he could designate an assistant manager to serve in that capacity, and that's what we believe was accomplished with the letter. I don't, if any of you have not seen it, I have a copy of it.
I have not.
Okay.
Do we know if legally this-
If this can happen, that I don't, I don't.
Say that again?
I was just wondering if we know that legally, from our standpoint, this has merit, because obviously the other one did not, so.
Right.
An application for a change of manager would typically come to the local licensing authority. So having a manager of record designated, designating an assistant, is it an assistant manager?
Yes.
It's an assistant manager.
But he's not, he's no longer the owner, so I don't think he can do that.
But he is still the manager of record.
Yes, but he's not the owner.
They're different, though. The two are different. The manager and the owner can be different.
There's no underlying LLC anymore that owns it. So the licensed entity was Berlin Commercial Realty LLC, which now does not own the licensed premises anymore.
And that's the name of the manager of record?
No, that's the name of the entity that owned the licensed premises.
Okay.
And who held the license.
That piece of it, though, my understanding is that's pretty normal when you're selling. I think for me, I would be more concerned about the legality of the management situation and who is taking responsibility and whether that is actually valid from our standpoint.
Right.
I think the ownership thing, that's something that happens all the time. You have a period of time where it goes from one to the other, and you tend to be leaning on that because it takes time to make that switch. So I think for us, it's the management piece that we sort of need to determine whether we're in the, whether this is valid and works or not.
We also have to remember that there is no current license holder. Greg Smith, or the, I'm sorry, Berlin Commercial Realty LLC is no longer, so there is no license holder of record at the moment. So we have to keep that in mind, too.
So in a transition, you're always going to have this situation.
For a short time.
For a short time.
However, you did a P&amp;S in July, and I think the fault that I see is that you trusted Mr. Smith, who didn't bring any kind of information to the Board and/or ABCC, and therefore it's been since July.
But, you know, that's true. I, again-
And it could be another month or two before, I mean, before ABCC will give you an okay.
Yes, it may be. I think what we're trying to suggest to the Board is tonight, is that we've taken the steps to hopefully assure the Board that the license is in good hands and that the operation is being run properly and that we have-
But how will you order alcohol?
Well, I don't think that, again, I think, again, in a transition, you'd have the same situation where Mr. Smith as manager is in a position, unless prevented by this Board, from going ahead and continuing to order. He's just designating someone else to do it in his stead, and I don't think that's unusual. The problem, I think, here, again, that you're facing, and you're correct on so, is we don't really like the way we got to this point. If everything had been done correctly, if we had been asked about this ahead of time, we could have approved your management agreement. We could have recognized your designee and helped you through this transition and instead of potentially presenting an obstruction to it. I only can tell you, I think, that we've done everything in good faith. We've tried to do this correctly. Did we rely too much on Mr. Smith? The reality of it is that we did, right up until and through the closing and into Friday, when I'm told I left a voicemail. I had the town administrator, rightfully so, saying on Thursday, you know, if you don't have your discharge of mortgage, how does your capitalization of this operation look to the town? Every step of the way where we were doing what we were required to do, we weren't getting the same response from Mr. Smith.
I realize that, you know, Mr. Smith has been a roadblock. I think it would have been in your best interest and his if he had attended the hearing, and he did not. He did not follow up with the agreement that you all had. You know, I think that was where you went wrong, was just that you trusted him.
So I just want to confirm, Mr. Smith has the current liquor license, yes?
Correct.
You're not counting on him to play any type of active role, which you said a little while ago?
That's true.
You said that he's really not on site, that he was to complete a task, but now that he's, that's finished, he's gone, correct?
He's not, I mean, about. I mean, I think he comes in to check mail, maybe that's still coming for him, but we don't have him playing an active role in the day-to-day operation. That's true.
So are you entertaining motions?
Sure.
Or do you want more discussion?
You can make a motion.
So I'm going to move that the Board vote to suspend the all-alcohol license of the Berlin Commercial Realty, doing business as the Flat Penny Bar and Grill, 263 West Street, effective tomorrow, October 29th, with such suspension to run until said license can be exercised by a legal entity and persons duly authorized to do so by this Board and the ABCC.
I will second that. Is there any discussion?
I guess my preference would be to see, to check with our legal as to whether the assistant manager piece would bring them into some sort of compliance before we take a small business and put them in this position. I think this is a really complicated situation. I see them trying to do the right thing, so I would like to make sure that we take all the steps we can to help them continue to try to do the right thing before we suspend their license.
Well, I've had several conference calls with our attorney, and I don't, if he hadn't said anything at all about this, which I think he would have, if it was something that we would have perhaps changed our minds.
So can I ask a question? So this would mean that essentially the business would be closed until we have a liquor license, and the employees that we have, I guess, know everyone's got a job. Is that what we're doing?
I think he can still serve-
Can I also just say-
Wait, let me answer your question. This is a liquor license hearing. I would caution you that the common vic license and the entertainment license- I would caution you that the common vic license and the entertainment license are also a part of what is our, under our authority. However, and I guess that decision would be up to you, it would just be the liquor license at this point that we're talking about. So I'm going to leave that up to you as far as what you do with that. I mean, we can set a hearing tonight for the license, the liquor license, and we can discuss the other two then, too.
Well, if I may just make a comment, in, in my entire career in, in the restaurant industry, and spent the last 25 years in, in restaurant management, when we change over a GM or change over whomever the manager is, there's, I mean, there's plenty of time before you're having to file for the new manager of record. And so even when the attorney sat here last week, he said, he specifically said that, you know? And we haven't really, we've just switched over. Yes, our P and S was in July, but it was just official last week. And so there really hasn't been this, this month of, of time that you're referring to.
But you've been publicizing that you are the new managers and where this has been going on since July. And it's, it's a, you know, a beaten horse that unfortunately, Mr. Smith was not helping you. So again, to a point that I brought up last week about your accountability and your responsibility as new owners to come forth and make sure that things were going on, which you didn't, unfortunately, you left it totally in the hands of, of Mr. Smith, so.
While that, while that's true, and, and we kind of touched upon this last week with, with you guys' attorney sitting here, and he made it clear that even if we had done that, that as people who are not the holder of that license, we wouldn't have been able to make any change to it.
And I understand that, but.
So I don't understand how that is weighing in. What we couldn't have done, there would have been nothing that we would have said that could have had any effect on that license without it coming from Greg Smith.
But you don't know that?
Okay, okay, all right. We're going to close the debate. I think the concern, at least my concern, is that it was operating with you all purchasing liquor since July or whenever this so-called agreement went into effect between you and Mr. Smith and that we don't want it, or I don't want it to continue. Hopefully, the time is short. There's a motion on the table and a second. And I'm going to call for a vote. So all in favor of the motion, signify by saying yeah, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So we do have a, a majority.
You want to close the public hearing?
Yes, yes. So I'm going to close the public hearing. And we can, tonight, pick a date when we can have our part of the licensing hearing.
On the new license, on the transfer license?
Yes. So do we want to get out our calendars or what?
I need to see if it's complete. I don't see identification for Ms. Connor. I did not see it for the other two, which we do triple I and query checks here at the local level before we let the application proceed. So there are some pieces that you could fax over or scan over.
Sure, certainly.
I didn't have time today because I came at 2:15 in the afternoon to spend a lot of time reviewing it for completeness. But presuming that the missing pieces, if any, you could get to us quickly by email.
Certainly.
You have to act within a license within 30 days, whether it's complete or not. If it's incomplete, you can still say, take no action or negative action, that it's incomplete. But I trust that you've probably got the missing pieces in.
Okay, so what, I mean, what?
If any.
What are we talking about, Mary?
So today's the 28th.
This has to take into account the hearing advertisement?
Let's see, this is change of ownership. Yep, there'd have to be notice to the owners. Actually, not really determined is whether there is a license transfer or whether it's an application for a new license, whether this was constructively abandoned.
Okay, that's to be determined. Is November 12th too soon?
That would be too soon.
November 18th?
Yeah, it could be the 18th or it could be by stipulation on the 25th.
So that's three weeks.
So that's three weeks without serving alcohol.
Does that, that will work, the 18th?
Yep, it can, it can be done.
Okay. Will that work for you as far as your?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Good.
Is there anything else we need? On our end administratively, we will make all communications necessary to be sure that as new applicants, you have all the, that you have everything filed that you need to have filed to the greatest extent we can. The application paperwork's going to go off to ABCC, too, as well, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to notify anybody, police, anything, all about that?
I'm not sure. Margaret?
Excuse me?
Do we need to notify anybody, police or?
We need to issue a notice of suspension, which will be worked on and signed by the board, and police will get a copy of that.
Do you want to, do you want to, do we need a vote to do that this evening?
I think you probably should take a vote on signing the notice of suspension. And if you could authorize the chair to come in and sign that tomorrow when we have it ready.
Okay. And I know that it's, it's been run by the attorney.
He's seen an initial look at it, so I don't know if anything needs to be adjusted on the notice.
Right, in the case that we were going to decide this. Okay, so do I hear a motion to have the chair sign the document as soon as it's looked at by the attorney and?
So moved, because I'm not repeating all that. But yes, a motion to approve the chair to go in and provide the signature for the document as soon as it is ready.
Okay. I will second it. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that an aye?
It's an aye.
Okay, thank you.
We've already done the damage, so.
Couldn't hear you.
Is that, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Two, one.
No, no, no.
Not three, one, three.
It was real. She couldn't hear you either. All right. And are we going to defer the, the open session meeting for, for this evening?
Yes.
I think we were going to.
Hold on those?
Margaret and, Margaret wanted to run that by our attorney also from last week hearing.
That includes hearing.
So we have.
Enter night.
What's that?
Enter night's draft.
Yes. Enter night's, yes. I, are you willing to sit for a few minutes or?
Sure.
You sure? Okay. All right. We have, under correspondence, a vote to sign a revised letter and conditional agreement with the Hudson Board of Selectmen regarding permission for Hudson Municipal Water Service to enter Berlin to service the Indian Farm Estates Housing Project.
Through the chair, the board has the letter before it to sign and also the, the ground opening permit. And I ask that the board's vote to sign the letter and the ground opening permit be condition, be contingent on the highway superintendent's full review and approval. Thank you.
Oh, no.
And receipt of the performance bond in the amount satisfactory to the town. Hudson's execution of the letter agreement that is here and confirmation from the planning board that the subdivision application process is complete. This is expected tomorrow night. The planning board process is expected to close tomorrow night. And, and all permitting requirements have been satisfied.
So moved.
Okay.
So seconded.
Okay. Is there anything else, any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, here's my, underneath my agenda, geez.
Pop on today's date or tomorrow's date?
Do, Margaret, do you want to?
Do you want a date?
Do you want to date it today or wait till tomorrow?
Today or tomorrow? Or do you want to wait? Doesn't matter.
You can, you can date it today. We're just going to hold on to the.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right, we've got Safe Roots to School Signs and Lines Support Letter.
Through the chair, we had a meeting last week attended by two MassDOT Safe Roots, or Safe Roots to School representatives, the police chief, the highway superintendent, CMRPC. I'm fairly certain there was someone else, and I'm drawing a blank, and I apologize. But we met regarding a small grant program that is currently open through MassDOT. It's the Safe Roots to School Signs and Lines Program. It'll, it will grant up to $6,000. It's highly competitive. They're only going to award five, five grants in this. Very, very, thank you, Mary. Very small program. We are one of only two towns in the central Mass region that's even going to be putting in an application. So with, you know, with strong justification, a strong, a strong application in this support letter, we feel we might have, we might stand a chance of getting something. The grant we're applying for would go to sign and create at the, at Berlin Memorial School, so in and around the parking area and driveways of Berlin Memorial School, and also a solar-powered movable LED sign that shows a person's speed. It may or may not be one of the smiley face, frowny face signs, but it would, it would help it and it could be moved where we, where we see problems. So that's what we're going to try for with this small grant. So I ask that the board sign, sign this letter supporting the grant application.
Okay, so moved. Seconded.
Anything else?
Question?
Yeah?
The abbreviation of MUTCD is short for? You, you can just tell me.
Something Uniform Traffic Code. Traffic Code something, so it's highly reflective.
Okay.
It's short for highly reflective.
All right, close enough.
Good grief. It's almost as long as highly reflective.
If the highway superintendent was here, I bet you he'd know.
Manual on Uniform Traffic Control of Rights.
Okay.
Sweet.
Thank you.
All right. We are now to the general public comment. If anyone has a public comment at this time? All right. We'll move on. We have, oh, we have no department updates either, correct?
Not this week.
Not this week. All right, so we're on to the town administrator report.
I'm just going to pick a few key things. First of all, FY '21 budget, fiscal year '21 budget kickoff meetings. I'm trying to get them tentatively scheduled, I'm trying to get them scheduled for Thursday, November 7th, one at 10:00 a.m. in the morning for all departments and another one at 7:00 p.m. for boards and committees. I do know there's a conflict, there's a presentation that's going to be given by the Sierra Club at the library that night. I just don't know that we can avoid, avoid this completely. Maybe we can bump our, our meeting up by half an hour or so. This past week, a group of local officials met with Evan Carloni, the design engineer for the library septic system. He came with good news. A tight tank at the library is not going to be required. He was able to design a system, and I can't remember the name of the system, but he was able to design a few options for a system in order to fit, and I wouldn't call it traditional, in order to fit a, a, you know, tanks and, and leach field on, on the property.
A Presby system.
Presby system, that's it, a Presby system. So the, the design that he had come, that he had come to the meeting with, put the system on the very edge of the property and it would require at least five different variances for, for different things. So the discussion came, you know, the discussion came around to, well, what are the, you know, what are the other options? And of course, what is DEP going to, going to recommend when they see it? There is another option. It would require more extensive work, and that work would include moving the well and moving the septic system to another piece of the property that would require less, fewer variances. So he is working on that option now, and we are going to follow up with a meeting with DEP to discuss the possibilities and see where they are. And we would probably have a discussion at that time with DEP to request an extension of time if, if we were going to go with that bigger project. Because moving, moving the well and the, and the septic system may actually require an additional town meeting vote to, to broaden the scope of, of work. And then, let's see.
So a quick question around that. So the money that was voted in by the town, that will more than cover it, correct?
That's our, that's our understanding based on that initial meeting. We, you know, we do have to keep in mind that if the well is involved, DEP does consider that a public water supply, so it's not just your traditional, you know, regular residential well. It's, it's going to involve a lot more permitting and things like that. But I think we got the impression that we would be well within the appropriation, at least initially.
We got the town accountant on board.
At least initially.
I haven't seen any numbers, so I cannot have a.
Yeah. Well, I mean, as far as the articles.
Yeah. What we discussed was very much ballpark, so we, we don't have real numbers yet. We have the solar pilot negotiations that are upcoming this Thursday. We're going to have our negotiations kickoff meeting with Lisa Weissaki, Assessor Molly Reed and I, along with the town's owner's agent consultant, Beth Greenblatt. She'll attend by phone. A lot of people have been asking about the mailing of tax bills. The mailing of the tax bills is anticipated the week of November 4th, so by the end of next week, we hope that the.
7th or 8th.
7th or 8th, get close to the end of the week. And finally, I, I mentioned this at almost all meetings, the discussion with Clinton regarding shared bucket truck is still ongoing. Dave has now reached out to the person at DPW in charge of this, and they are going to have a follow-up discussion. So, yeah, it's promising. So that's it for my updates for this week.
All right. So we'll move on to old business, the policy regarding modification of Selectmen-issued licenses.
I ask that that be deferred for a first reading until the board's, the board's next.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry. For the second reading?
Yeah. It'll be, it would be the first reading on this modification, general, of general licenses.
Okay.
I haven't seen that in the.
Right.
Right. And the licensing rules and regulations?
The board does have a markup before you tonight, but again, I would ask for board action, I would ask to defer final board action on this until your meeting next week. So what we did with this particular draft was we modified the section under Sunday Sales because we did learn that the town has accepted Chapter 138, Section 33B, which allows the selling of, of alcoholic beverages at on-premises establishments on Sundays as early as 10:00 a.m. So we needed, and I, and I want. So we needed, and I, and I want to go through this more fully, even to make sure that everything that's in this document is, is accurate for, for Berlin. Okay, so we're going to defer that, and that would be the second reading for next meeting? Yes. Okay. But the Board has an additional week opportunity to get me any additional comments and questions on this. Okay. Bonus time. Okay, and we're moving on to the amendments to the special event application for Halloween Children's Event. Hi.
Hi.
Come on up.
Oh, my gosh, this is great.
Since we're talking Halloween, we toned down from last year, so there you go. Okay, we'll take it off as soon as the Halloween chat is done, but to get in the spirit. Compared to last year, greatly toned down.
Eyeballs and skulls.
Yeah, and skulls, yeah.
We've got skulls.
I like it.
Okay.
All right.
So. Can you take us seriously?
No, that's the problem.
I know, I know. So we want to postpone the event to Saturday.
That's November 2nd.
Correct.
Right.
We chose Saturday over Sunday because after speaking with the church leaders, we thought it was a good idea to sort of.
Get everybody in there at once?
Yeah, kind of together, and they were in support of it. Love the idea of everything being in the hub and.
Okay.
Sort of, you know, bring sort of church back to blah, 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 which was great. Logistically, now there's a baby shower happening, or that was always happening, at 1870.
Right.
Fifty people are expected to attend.
Right.
So we closed Woodward.
Where are they going to park it?
Correct.
Right.
So Margaret suggested maybe just moving the entire event to South Common, which I think is a really good idea, except that I think it takes away from the church fair.
Maybe need signs at the church to tell them to come over.
No, I was thinking people that attend. Yeah, I think vice versa, because I don't think a lot of people really know about that.
Really?
Yeah, friendship fair.
Hmm.
At least people that I've spoke with.
Yeah.
In that youth and families population, you know? So I thought if everything was there, it would just be a, it's a sort of a win-win. Obviously, the safety of the community is paramount.
Yeah.
So I don't know. And then we thought about doing the scarecrows in the center because it's, you know.
It's there. Clinton has them, Northborough has them right in the center.
Right.
I think you'd lose it if you went, if you moved it to South Common.
That's the problem.
It's too far off the road.
Is there any way to move it over to Carter Street? I know you can't close Carter Street, but you could maybe manage that with crossing guards and et cetera.
I think it would be pretty cool, though. I think you had mentioned putting them on the fence of the, the tennis courts.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely, you know.
Not that it's not in the center of town, but it's really a great.
It's a pass-through. People would see them.
Display.
Definitely not as.
Community holding everything together.
Yeah.
That's what was really appealing there.
Would you?
Um.
Change.
Someone else that suggested that. I don't know if it's, is it crop down?
I don't think it's cropped down yet.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's probably pretty much dead, though.
Yeah.
I mean, what about, what about, just throwing this out there, closing Carter and Woodward?
We already talked about that, and it won't work.
Well, no. Why won't that work? I'm just wondering.
There was a public safety access issue. They wanted to at least keep one lane on Carter open for, for trucks to go through. They were going to allow parking on one side.
Right.
Originally, we were going to, and then emergency access would be along the other side of, of Carter.
Right.
But that could, I mean, that could be potentially managed, similar to how you would do, I mean, a lot of places have elementary schools where kids have to cross the street and that sort of thing. It seems like, especially if we've talked to the library and 19 Carter, that you could potentially do something in that circle and just manage the traffic coming through. I mean, it's a Sunday afternoon. I, I don't think it's madness down there as far as traffic, and people don't really go tons of fasts because you have to turn on.
In Saturday, the library closes at 1:00.
Yep.
So what time does 19 Carter close? Anyone?
It might be, it might be open in the afternoon, too.
I think they're open in the, they're open for coffee in the morning. I think they may only go till 1:00 or 2:00.
Yeah, I don't, I can find out easily.
I don't know.
I know Goody was concerned, too, about the, you know, the safety of the kids.
Right.
On Woodward Ave, really did suggest, like, the school or the school parking lot or.
Oh, so 19 Carter is shut at noon?
They're completely open or completely closed.
Hello?
No schools.
They don't necessarily post it. They have private rentals, those are just things that the public is invited to.
Right, and usually their, usually their rentals are later in the afternoon, like 5:00 or 6:00. If you probably go to their website, it would show if anything is.
I'm going to say for both, for private, and they're just showing what the public is invited to.
So to Lisa's point, you could kind of scoot them down towards the end of the road to the library in 19 Carter because it's quieter.
Then you could do that side of the church, the other side of the church, the Carter side.
With someone like the trunk or treat, you know, down there.
Well, I was thinking, okay, I was thinking to, we have the back part of the church, the grass area, and just do the cars there. Like, so they're all, all the trunks are in, facing in, the kids are there.
Okay, so instead of facing the, you're facing the other way.
Yes, you're facing into the, correct. And that way, the kids are, you know, I mean, you know.
Fine.
Yeah, they're on the grass.
Wrong word, but yes, they're, they're there.
Yeah.
They're okay with you parking in the grass there?
Well, not in the grass, but.
Well, no, you wouldn't really be on the grass. You'd sort of kind of be.
Pointing in towards the, yeah.
Into the grass, yeah.
So you'd back in.
You'd back in, right.
Instead of pulling in, you'd back in.
Correct.
We have any idea how many cars there is going to be?
I mean, I can't imagine it's going to be, I don't, do we have any idea? No.
Okay.
I could find out. I, I can't imagine there'd be more than 20 max, I'd say.
And you've got spots at 19 Carter there, and then the library on the side, and then the library on the front.
For the other people to park.
Yeah, I don't think parking for the event would be bad because you can, we can park at the school for the event, and people can just walk up because it's all, you know, sidewalk the whole way up. For our event, the Halloween event, I think for the shower, they should park on Woodward, I think, because that's.
Going back to, with that many people in that area, anybody who's trying to drive there is going to be cautious, and if you have people at either end, you know, looking at traffic and, and managing and saying, be, be careful with vests on and that, I think this is very easily manageable.
Yeah, because even the church fair, I mean, it can get busy, and people do, they park, if this was the church, they'd park here, and then they park on the side.
They cross the front of the church, they cross, they park up Carter Street.
Yeah.
Okay.
Most of the time.
So church fairgoers.
And some people maybe even park on Woodward, especially in the morning, but.
And the fair ended at like 3:00, didn't it?
Yeah, it was at 3:00.
3:30, yeah.
And Tom Thandert tends to dwindle towards the end, too, so 2:00 to 3:00 isn't.
Yes, busy.
Super busy. I think there's an appeal to keeping it uptown. I can understand the safety officer's point, but I think maybe I can meet with them and just lay out and then listen to sort of the feedback that they have about, you know, maybe we need to barricade that part off, like Officer Goody suggested with the caution tape, maybe.
Well, I think the issue here is that we need to approve this tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Because we don't meet again until after the event.
I see.
Well, we can start that with the condition of public safety sign-off on whatever the plan is.
So we're still going to go with scarecrows in the front?
Scarecrows.
Pumpkins in the front?
Pumpkins.
Us voting?
Yep, I love that.
Selectmen for the day.
Yeah, I think that's really cute, yep.
Weather's good for both days.
Yep. I was going to be doing Sunday.
Through the Chair.
Yes.
Just some long-range planning here. I suggest looking at next year now. Look at the date for Halloween next year now, pick a weekend, and make sure you run it by 1870 at least to get it on her radar to make sure that she can, you know, that she knows that you want to do that on, on those particular days.
And that was a suggestion by the church, too, that, I mean, this was kind of like, hey Julie, hey Peg, and then it just went. So, yeah, next year, we'll definitely have a little bit more foresight to.
Yep.
So we're not scrambling.
Correct.
And we have a rain date in case we run into a monsoon like we did this year.
What is it required, like, three weeks ahead of time at least for approval?
It says on the application.
I think so.
But there wasn't an application.
What's that?
For the longest time, there wasn't an application.
Right.
For us to get feedback from departments, so it's been a longer-than-usual process.
Right.
So then, do we need to modify here where it says Woodward Ave Road Closure? Does that get scratched out?
If it's not going to be closed.
It's not going to be closed because the baby shower.
Well, I already, I mean, I was crossing out, is this recreation that's doing this now?
Correct.
Okay.
Now we have a forum.
Okay, and so.
Only in Upstate Vermont.
You'd probably have to refill it out. I mean, it's, it's not Margaret any longer, too.
Okay.
So.
So we should, can we close it or open it just for baby shower? So that people aren't going down, it's just for baby shower?
Well, I don't think you'd have anybody to monitor that. I think you'd just keep everything over on the other side.
You're not doing a detail, right?
And people could park for the fair on Woodward and all of that, too. So people who are not participating necessarily in the trunk or treat, but bringing their kids or whatever, they can park on that side now, too.
Okay.
But if you have 50 car, 50 people coming to the shower, you're going to have a boatload of that parking is going to be taken up by those folks anyways.
Yeah.
So what do you think there, Town Administrator?
I think there are a few changes that need to happen to the form, and then you'll have a different plan. You'll have a different plan laid out that you're going to run by public safety officials.
Yes.
So do we approve it conditionally, as Lisa said, until everything is back? And then do we authorize you to come down and sign it on our behalf, or?
Well, I think it's approved. It doesn't have to be.
Signed?
That's approved based on public safety.
It does say Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Clerk.
So we sign it, and it's just conditionally?
On the bottom.
Yeah, yeah.
So what if they say, you know what, Joel, this is, this is logistically a safety nightmare?
Then, then you'd have to modify the plan.
Then how do we get the event to happen?
Well.
In that time?
You might have to go to the.
South Common, tennis courts.
So we can, we can modify the plan and not come back to the Board?
If we vote it that way.
Okay.
Is that?
Can we give Margaret also authority to approve that sort of change rather than?
The authority to approve the final product.
Based on all public safety.
And then let us know, and we'll come down and.
No, we can.
Or you can authorize you to sign on the floor.
She can do it, we don't need to.
Right, okay, then we could give her the authority to sign on our behalf.
Exactly.
Okay.
And I think maybe long-term, we need to discuss this sort of thing so that when things come up, such as changes that happened last weekend, Margaret has more authority in this area so that events can actually happen.
Okay.
Sounds great.
All right. So do I hear a motion to give Margaret the authority to make this decision?
Be our guiding light?
And sign on our behalf in this instance? Conditioned on public safety approvals. Right. And Julie, you'll be circulating all of that?
Yes.
Okay.
I was wondering that, too. I don't know who to sort of, well, I know who, but I don't know who doesn't want to read it, you know, because everyone gets flooded with so many emails, you know what I mean, and they get lost in email chains.
I would send out an email that's labeled Important Amendments to Special Event Application and send it to all of these parties that are listed right on the application.
Okay.
And also to Mary and, and we'll be sure that all reviewers get it.
Okay.
Is Tom away this week? Did I get an out-of-office bounce back, so is there someone?
Only until tomorrow.
Oh, okay, perfect.
So.
Motion on the floor, seconded. Margaret has power.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great, thank you.
So that means we need to start talking for Christmas in Berlin, quick, right after this one stuff. There you go. Those are yours, you can have them.
Sweet.
I expect to see, button right there.
Okay.
I expect to see you and them on Saturday.
It's time for glasses.
Honestly, after you're 40, right, everything changes. All right, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Lisa.
Okay.
That was great.
We're moving on to new business and increase, increase the rate of pay for a current Council on Aging van driver to $14.99 an hour. Through the Chair, the Council on Aging Director submitted a request by email that the rate of, the hourly rate of pay for the one bus driver, the one COA van driver the Town currently has increased from $12 an hour to $14.99 an hour, as was previously approved for a new hire based on the amended job description and all the policies that accompany the COA van operation. I have asked Personnel Committee if they could add this to their agenda for Wednesday night, and I, I do support the Council on Aging Director's request. This pay rate would put the van driver in the ballpark of other area van, van drivers as well.
Motion to approve. Seconded.
Okay, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have to say, the Council on Aging van went down my street today.
Oh!
Which is a very kind of low-key street.
The old one.
No, the old one.
Really?
Yeah. It was making a lot of noise, though.
Yes, and that's, that's how it shows on the new.
Something was rattling?
Yeah, something was wrong with it.
It was probably all the water from the leak in the ceiling.
Oh, it was sloshing, sloshing as it drove down the road.
Should I update the Board on the meeting this morning? I thought you were going to say something else there. Shh. Not on camera, never. Should you update what? On the Council on Aging. Sure. We had a, Holly and I met with the Northborough Council on Aging Director, Northborough's Town Administrator, Dennis Lipka from WRTA, a person from an agency that works with WRTA who does dispatching, and Connie Melis from Central Mass Planning Commission this morning just to talk about how Northborough's van operates under an agreement with Worcester Regional Transit Authority. Holly and I both agree that there are a lot of, there is a lot of investigation we need to do, and there is a lot of community outreach we need to do before we actually change the way our van operates. We do understand from having these discussions that there is the potential that the Council on Aging van could reach a lot more people and do a lot more runs more frequently through some sort of agreement, more than we could ever do on our own. And it would also relieve the Town of a lot of liability. But at the same time, we also have to make sure that we are, we are providing a service that Berlin seniors and others who may take the van want and expect. So we're not moving quickly on this. Northborough knows it, we know it. Northborough knows it, we know it. I think Holly is arranging a meeting with Berlin's Council on Aging Chair, well, actually, the entire council on aging and Northborough's Council on Aging Director to talk about how their vans operate, so our COA will start getting more informed about this.
So the COA was not included?
They weren't in today's meeting, only the director. And, and the COA there is a policy, I'm sorry, it's an advisory body. The council on aging director does the administrative work and knows best how the van operates. So I think that's going to be coming in the near future, and then we'll probably be looking at another survey for Berlin seniors and actually Berlin residents all around, just to talk about public transit and potential van use, getting to and from different things. So that's coming, but we're, we're not jumping on this at all. We're doing, we're doing our, we're going to do our due diligence.
Okay. All right. All right. Board questions and comments, and we've got Coffee Talk 4.0 recap.
Good session, well-advertised. Thank you to the people who showed up. I always get something new out of them, so I'm very, very grateful that we continue to have them. Mary, thank you. I think your adult coloring pages went over extremely well with that. Oh, and they are displayed in the room, so that is awesome. But yeah, I mean, I think obviously the concerns of traffic keep coming up. Grateful to Chief Tom for being there to talk about what's going on, you know, and to stress that it's not an easy fix, and it's not going to be a quick fix, but I think the town takes some comfort in knowing that we hear them and we're doing things for them. So obviously, I would like to see them continue for that, so. But no, all in all, I think a good night. Thank you to Mr. Pollan for the yummy desserts. Appreciate that. Truly took a village, you know, Evy, to letting us go in there, and, you know, Chief Galvin, Chief Clark, Dave, our highway guy, all of you for participating, so.
I think they at least, each had at least one question to answer.
They did, they did. So very, very grateful that it went off, and we will, at some point, start to plan Coffee Talk 5.0. Margaret, you know, maybe we can do it in conjunction with the COA van, maybe that will help to draw more people, you know, public hearings, or not hearings, public information just to get it out there. So we'll look at, you know, the best bang for the buck. And this way, too, plan it a little bit more in advance, so we can either use the 1870 or go back to 19 Carter for the meeting.
That was going to be my question and comment.
Quicker out, yeah.
Yes. Holly happened to come in when I was here one day and said that, right now, Thursday evenings are free.
Okay.
And if we were to pick a date, however many months out, she can make sure that nothing is booked on that date.
Upstairs or down? Doesn't matter?
I think upstairs.
Okay.
So I don't know, how often are we doing these?
We'll find some time in Q1. I mean, you know, the holidays, I think, will be here a lot quicker than anybody anticipates, so it'd be kind of tough to, you know, schmooze people in January, February. I mean, we'll figure it out. We'll, we'll let the town kind of like tell us.
I think I was supposed to give her a heads up.
February.
February? A Thursday in February?
Pick a Thursday.
13.
There you go.
We can have Valentine's Day cupcakes.
Oh, geez. April, though. There you go, February 13th.
Oh, there we go.
Upstairs.
The week before they, she's not available for cupcakes.
Oh, then it's perfect. Cruisin'. All right, then there you go, the date is settled, so if you could talk to Holly, 13th of February.
All right.
Because, yeah, that'll probably take a little bit more coordination, make sure that there is a mic up there, we'll probably have to put out the chairs and things like that, so it might take a little bit more of an effort, but we'll get it done.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, put that in your calendar.
And one of the other things I was going to bring up was that whether we should have a discussion on the use of the 1870 Town Hall also at some point, or if you wanted to wait until you had more of a feel for building use in town from whatever else you're working on?
There are a lot of considerations with building use. I don't, I don't see any way that we can tackle everything all at once, but I think that we do need to start looking at each of the individual buildings and how they're used and how they'd be optimized. Yes, I, particularly if we're running short of meeting space at any given day or time or -- It's something we can look at. But I also think we could make better use of meeting space here, so.
Okay.
I think there's a, there's just a mix of things that we need to --
That's fine, I just wanted to bring it up. We had talked about doing, having a discussion at some point, and we just haven't done it.
Okay. And yes, we can, we can have a discussion at some point on that and the many other town-owned buildings, whether occupied or not.
Right. All right, any other comments and questions?
Just that I know that there was a meeting last week, Asabet, last week? Last week. Asabet came last week, correct?
The walkthrough, yes.
Yeah, so we're just ready, waiting to hear from them on potential, what can be done, what can't be done. Okay. I'll follow up with Mark, but thank you to Highway Dave, because I know that he was kind of like running with that meeting, so appreciate his help.
Okay, is there anything else?
Yeah, I just had a couple of things from the Coffee Talk as well, that I had a couple of follow-up items. First of all, there was a question or comment raised about providing additional detail in some board and committee agenda, so I have followed up with Eloise. I've asked her for a couple of models because I think what I'll do is just circulate a model agenda, just to show what kind of, what kind of detail would satisfy the open meeting law and adequate notice to the public and things like that. And then, right after Coffee Talk, when the subject of the 495-290 interchange came up, we received information on a public information meeting that's going to be happening from Mass. So I think that's up on the website and it's been put out on Facebook, so, so that's --
Yep, Mary pushed it, I copied.
It happened right after Coffee Talk, was very conveniently timed, so that's all I have, those are the only additional comments.
All right. When is that meeting? We'll send reminders as it gets closer.
I'm trying to pull it up.
Okay. All right, well, you can look later. Well, you, you push it, you tell me, I'll push it.
Do you have anything, Lisa?
Nope.
Okay. Excuse me, I do have one more item that came up several times at Coffee Talk. It was about, it was about all this grant funding for infrastructure and the, and the fact that the town really does need to start thinking about funding design engineering in order to even qualify for grant funding. I think there's a broad recognition that, that roads and infrastructure need to be kept up, and so I think it's our duty to, you know, to pursue this grant funding, but we also have to, we also have to do our part to make sure that we have funding in place year after year after year to put into this design engineering. So it's something that we're going to work on. Thank you. That's it, I promise.
Tuesday, November 5th, at 6:00 in Clinton, oh, all right, Hudson, David Quinn Middle School Cafeteria in Hudson, 201 Manning Street. I'll put a reminder in to re-push it next week.
All right, and then flag me, and then I'll do it. Okay, cool, thanks.
I'll do the other one.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we have need for an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, the fire and EMS chief and the building commissioner, and also to vote and approve executive session meeting minutes. And we will only return to open session to adjourn the meeting.
Wysocki, aye.
Keefe, aye.
Stone, aye. Thanks, Mr. B.
See you later.
Did Scott? Oh, he didn't say anything, okay.